Call this regular council meeting to order July 27, 2015.
Didn't you say July?
No, I didn't mean to say July. I saw something.
God, it's awful hot outside.
Crack that. We'll start over. October 27, 2015. Okay, I'm just that far behind. We have a prayer by Maria.
Lord, we ask you to send your Spirit of servanthood upon all of us gathered here this evening to do your work for the benefit of all in our community. We ask you to bless our elected and appointed officials so they may deliberate with wisdom and act with courage. Bless the members of our community who come here to speak before the council so they may state their cause with honesty and humility. Lord, we ask you to bless us all that everything we do here tonight will move you to welcome us one day into your kingdom as good and faithful servants, and we ask this in the name of our brother Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, call the roll.
Brokaw, here. Dries.
Here.
Halter.
Here.
Hermes.
Here.
Lee. Walther.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
And without exception, Mr. Lee has an excused absence. Have the approval of minutes, the minutes of the September 22, 2015 regular council meeting and the October 13, 2015 public hearing and meeting work session.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the minutes for those meetings as presented by the clerk.
Second.
Okay, all right, so be it. Okay. This is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council and ask questions of concern to them. When recognized, please come forward to the lectern, give your name and address and state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped recorded for ease of transcriptions. Comments are limited to two minutes.
Hello, I think everybody knows me, I'm Doug Kohler, 53, Alona. I want to thank the administration and everyone here who helped support this Harvest Fest we just completed. Would not have happened without you. I know there's a lot, a lot of volunteers. Like my wife always says, it takes a village to put on an event like this. I want to, yeah, Yvonne and your staff did a great job. Jeff, you were amazing. I think everybody here put some time in on this and I really appreciate it. Harvest Fest has grown from, three years ago, we had 16 booths. We had a great time six, three years ago. Last year we had 24 booths. We had 38 this year. It keeps growing. It's obviously something the village wants, and I appreciate all your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Reports of village officials, municipal manager, Yvonne Kovak.
Thank you, Mayor. It is a super busy time, so I do have a number of items to report on tonight. And I think some of these will be covered in some other reports, so I won't belabor too much, but just know that our, the waste bid, collection bid is still out. Those are due back on November 4th, and we're working through the Center for Local Government and the consortium. They will analyze them, make sure everybody's, you know, responded accordingly and report that back to us. They're estimating by November 13th. So, I think the big thing I want to point out there is that, that does not fall in time for our work session. So, we will maybe need to meet in between the two meetings. We'll be prepared to talk about it on the 24th.
In November?
Or you would have to vote for it, yes, in November, so.
What would be, what would we be voting for on the 24th?
You would be voting for a contract with a waste hauler. And that's the one that'll give us a new rate. Let us know what our new rate would be for the next three years with two one-year options is the way we currently have it worth it. Okay, and unfortunately, it's the end of the year, we have a lot of stuff coming up, and I'm going to try to touch on some of those. We also, I've reported previously that the bids were out for our aggregation program. Those have come back, and that item will also be before council on the 10th. And a community development committee meeting's been set up for that to talk that through as well in advance of that particular meeting. Just to give you a heads up, IGS, that's our current provider, this is for natural gas, they were definitely the best bid, and they are the ones being recommended, but we will walk through everything that that means at the community development meeting. We've started the process on our property and liability insurance bid. We expect to have some proposals come back to us by late November, so we will keep you informed of what's going on there. That will probably come to you in December for January 1 renewal. I think I had given you an update on our healthcare. We are still waiting on some final figures. Actually, we are, this is with our current carrier anthem, we're looking somewhere between a 3.43 and a 6.21 increase. There's quite a difference between those two plans. The lower one is a, and those rates may change, that's what we're waiting for, can give you a final there, but the one with the lower percentage increase actually is an HSA, very high deductible plan, right? Did I say it not? Yes, high deductible, within HSA. The other one, the higher percentage increase has, is not an HSA and still has a co-pay. So, what we are kicking around at this point in time is that those who would still want to have the co-pay would have to pay for the difference. You know, the village would only compensate the 80% up to the amount of the lesser of the two. And if somebody chooses to take the higher, the one with the co-pay, this is complex, bear with me, with the co-pay, then they would have to pay more for that rate, so that's what we're thinking about right now. Please?
A buy-up option.
A buy-up option. That sounds good, thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, anyway, I will have definitely more words, more information for you on November 10 for that as well. Let's see, I think the walking paths will be covered in another committee, tree planting also, was able to nail him down to a definite, we're looking at the week before or else the week after Thanksgiving for our trees to grow. Do you have a small report from the Recreation Commission? They're going to meet again on January 13, 2016. Two commission slots are up this year. Beth Gentry is interested in keeping her slot, and I have just found out that Steve Hawkins will not be continuing, so we'll have one vacancy in the Recreation Commission. I have listed the things that we do have coming up yet this year, and they're all big ones. The 2016 appropriation, 2016 fee schedule, the healthcare renewal, I touched on, the property and liability insurance renewal, the aggregation program, the waste collection, the billing services agreement, and then any changes that anyone is going to propose for the rules of council would have to be done yet this year as well. So, wanted to throw those all out so you can be aware that the next two months are going to be really busy ones. But productive, and of course, don't forget the recreation levy renewal coming up, it's on the ballot. Next, is that next to you, Sarah? That is next to you already. That's incredible. It's issue number five on the ballot, and I attached the overview that I've used for the recreation levy in case you want to have any information in hand. So, that concludes my report right now.
Any questions?
I do have a couple of questions. So, the last part, the Recreation Commission report, would they be sending applications to the office, to you, Ms. Kovak, or would it be on a general? How are they going to handle that, anybody that wants to join that is listening right now? How would it communicate to you or to somebody else who will be in charge?
Okay, and I guess I would kind of want to throw that back to council. I mean, how you handle in the past, is we've put an application up on the website, or people can pick them up here, and I, you know, what's our preference? Do you want them to submit the applications to me and then I make sure?
The last time I think they did that, and then you gave us the copies of it ahead of time.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and do it that way.
And that would be fine.
Okay, I'll put something on the cover of the website and along with the application, and we'll go ahead and take, I'll take those and make sure everybody.
And then we'll get a copy on that to find that. And then the other question that I have on the update on the healthcare renewal, between 3.43 and 6.21, what kind of percentage have we made part of our appropriations for the budget? When we did that, we, did we see that it was going to be an increase? How much was the percent that we put together at that time?
And I don't recall what Matt wrote into that.
We'll get back to you on that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay. In fact, I could probably text him and try to find out if he's looking at it. I don't recall, if he put anything in, I can tell it was more than that because our original bid came back at 19%.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we are, yeah.
Rams being up with the number for us a little bit, and it's, wow, I mean, we're glad it has lowered itself, but.
Okay. Hold on, thank you.
Law Director, Jeff Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor. Really nothing to report tonight. The main thing we've been talking about is your income tax ordinance revisions that are necessary. That's on your agenda tonight for consideration and adoption, so that's really been the main thing we've been working on, so nothing else to report.
Okay. Any questions, law director? Clerk of Council, Catherine Lyes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The September community calendar, as well as resolution numbers, 2015, 29 LNR, 30 LNR, 31F, 32F, 33F, 34F, 35 LNR, and 36F were posted as required. Additionally, cancellation of the October 26 Streets and Services and Laws and Rules Committees were posted as required, the public notices for those. So, if there are no questions, that would conclude my report.
All right, Chief of Police, Neil Fertoman.
Thanks, Mayor. Today wouldn't be a good day for it, but about a month ago, our golf cart ordinance went into effect, and we do have two registered golf carts in the village. And I have talked with those owners, and they're very satisfied, and they indicate they've had some fun with them. Recently, our supervisors attended a training session at FBI headquarters in Cincinnati, and it was regarding planning for school shooting events. There was a video, a very well-done video that was produced by the Bureau. Ironically, we viewed that video one day prior to the mass shootings in Oregon. It was a virtual carbon copy of the script. We have also been doing training in conjunction with Forest Park on our local responses, and that training will be presented along with this video we were able to obtain from the FBI on loan. Will be presented to all of our officers later this week when we have our annual departmental meeting. Earlier this month, command officers from the three jurisdictions that share our school district spoke at the Business Partners Appreciation Breakfast, and we did touch on the collaborative training that we've been doing in our schools. On October 5, Lieutenant Ward and I attended legal training in Golf Manor, and that was a regional training that was conducted by the Ohio Attorney General's Office. And we forwarded that information to our new municipal prosecutor, who will be giving a presentation on a legal update to all of our officers, again, at our meeting later this week. As you know, the Fifth Third Bank in Springdale was robbed at gunpoint on October 6, and as a result of Officer Andy Moore deploying stopsticks at the intersection of Sharon and Winton, we had probably the most police activity I've seen in our jurisdiction in a long, long time. Unfortunately, Andy was injured in that incident when he deployed the stopsticks, but very, very fortunately, his injuries were minor. He's on duty even as we speak, and I just checked with him to see how his aches and pains are, and he reports he has none, so we were very, very fortunate that his injuries were so minor. As you know, the speed display trailer was deployed on June Dale. That's been reclaimed by the State Patrol. We will remain on their list for when they have that available. We are fortunate that, for the most part, our drivers were behaving within acceptable parameters, but we'll still continue to monitor that and other hotspots throughout our community for speed. On October 12, Chip Burquest of Waycross Media completed upgrades to the municipal building server, and that increased our storage space village-wide to 1 TB for all of our offices. This network is used by all of our officers, and Chip also installed a second larger server that we're going to be using exclusively for the storage of cruiser videos, which are on a 30-day retention schedule. And the 4 TB server that we're using for that video storage should be sufficient to handle officer body cam videos if those are adopted or required in the future. Officer Mike Spinelli and I have both volunteered to read Primary North, and on October 8, I went over and read Officer Buckles in Gloria to Mrs. Stone's second grade class, and we had a really great time. And Officer Spinelli, I believe, has scheduled an upcoming visit. And additionally, we had some very young daycare students that visited us from the Learning Garden Academy that is down in the shopping center. Our departmental meeting that I touched on earlier, we're also going to update our officers on some mental health training, and our supervisory team will be discussing changes in policing and use of force responses. During the month of September, we investigated four accidents. That's up from one last year this same month. Nine crimes, which is up from four, 223 incidents, and of a total of 599 contacts, 244 of those were dispatched, and 100, I'm sorry, 355 were self-initiated by our officers. We provided assistance to the public in 110 instances, assisted other agencies 38 times. We made 41 criminal arrests and 26 traffic arrests. We did have some string of crimes of note that we put on our website, and for anyone that might be watching, I think it's important to note that we did have, I believe it was four, four recent incidences where cars were, unlocked cars were rifled through. One was in the H section, three were in the J section. The first one was on the 13th in the H section, and the last three in the J section were between the 17th and the 18th. There were minor things taken. In fact, the first one, there was no theft at all, it was just an attempt. The second one was significant, it was the GPS and some sunglasses. Interestingly, the third, third one was a wallet that was recovered a few blocks away with all of the credit cards and everything intact, with nothing missing. And the last one on the 18th was just some change that was taken. But what I think is important to note, that these were unlocked vehicles, so we urge all of our residents to lock their vehicles at all times when they're away from it, and make sure that their valuables are out of the vehicle. It's not a good idea to leave credit cards, or wallets, or anything of value in the vehicle, and particularly, don't leave expensive electronic devices or change in a spot that's easily seen. That can be pretty easily hidden. And we're going to talk about those tips and many others at a community-wide neighborhood watch meeting that will be upcoming soon on Thursday, November 12. That'll be at 7:00 PM. Marty Huff has graciously agreed to reopen the Troubadour at 6 for anyone that would like to come earlier for a meal, and food and drinks will be served during the meeting. And the meeting will commence at 7:00, and it's Thursday, November 12. We'll have officers there that will present some crime tips and take information from our citizens, and we'll have handouts that are available. Thanks, Mayor.
May I want to ask Chief something? The incident that happened over Winton Road and Sharon, I guess the guy was trying to get away where Andy got hurt.
Right.
Did they ever capture that person?
The FBI has become involved, the suspect has been involved in a series, string of robberies.
Okay.
I haven't received any kind of word or heard that he was apprehended, but they have identified him, and it's now a federal investigation, so.
Oh, wow, they have identified?
Yeah, he is identified.
Good.
Chief, the incidents that you had mentioned of the cars, then it all appears to be is a crime of opportunity, mostly because they tried and the door was open. There's no concerns, like in one, in one was, that they had someone breaking into the back of the doors not very long ago and stuff?
No, these were all in cars, and we had the same thing happen last year, and we actually made an arrest on that one. We were the only jurisdiction that made an arrest. Officer Patton followed through on that. And it was a group of actually female heroin addicts that were just going through and looking for easy targets, cars that were open. They didn't break into anything, and extended from here on over to Blue Ash. So, the fact that this only happened on, really, over between two nights, really gives me the feeling that that's what is occurring, because I understand that Springfield Township had the same thing right around that time period. So, we're on the lookout, we've certainly kept a check in the neighborhood since then. We haven't had any for 10 or 11 days now, and, you know, we do urge motorists just to lock those doors because that's probably going to save you from having a theft.
Thank you.
Comment on the robber. Robber using a similar MO, they said, is this guy, I think was a Chase bank, robbed up near King's, Kings Mill, Kings Auto Mall area, and they caught the guy hiding in the trunk of a car.
Right.
That he'd evidently borrowed from the dealership, but.
I didn't mention that right now, we're pursuing a federal grant for $20,000 to supplement covert drug investigations, and in my experience, almost every one of these, even the minor crimes, and certainly the bank robberies, are driven by heroin addiction. So, I think the more we target that and try and keep that away from our community, the safer we'll be. We'll go from number three, as you mentioned, Glenda, hopefully number one on the safe community list.
Well, that's what I wanted to mention. Everybody, I don't know how many people saw it, but it's been online, and Green Hills is ranked sixth of the tri-state area of the safest communities, number three in Hamilton County. And so, thanks to our police department, and thanks to our residents who obey the law and help keep others in line. We're still a pretty safe community. A number of years ago, we were ranked number one, so the chief is going to try to get us back up there.
It takes, it takes all of us to do that, but it's interesting to note that what really drove the crime stats was the assault number. And our number per 100,000 was 27.8, and Madera and Marie Mont, which were ahead of us in Hamilton County, had zero. Actually, our burglary rates were fairly comparable, and our larceny rates were even under Marie Mont's, for example, but a lot of those assault statistics were domestic violence cases.
Okay, thank you.
Fire Chief, Anthony Spade.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Run activity, this would be through the end of September. We had 531 runs year-to-date, and that's versus 560 through the same time period last year, so we're just slightly behind. Hydrant maintenance is going very well. We should have that wrapped up here within the next week or two at the latest, and that's where we go check every single hydrant in the village. We flow it, and then we shut it off to make sure it's not leaking. We pump them dry so that we have reliable water in the town for the winter moods. Just like to remind everybody that this Saturday is Halloween, 6 to 8, and it is on a Saturday, so that always increases the participation in that. So, just ask for everybody to put their outside lights on for safety. The fire department along with the police department will be out there in full force. We take a lot of pride in that. Not many communities do that, have the ability to do what we do there, so just appreciate everyone keeping an eye on everybody, and hopefully we'll have a safe Halloween, and it sounds like the weather's going to be good. Turkey raffle time, holy moly. The door-to-door raffles are going to be going out here pretty soon, so this year, there's a letter in the envelope as well as there is a copy of a $20 bill with a recruiting message on the back of it. So, we're giving you counterfeit 20, and if you could give us $20 back, help the fire department, and if you're interested, follow the instructions on there, and we'd be interested to hear. They really, they look fake, chief, so very clearly fake. The raffle itself will be Saturday, November 21, at 6:00 at the American Legion, so those of you that are very familiar with that know what to do, and those that haven't, I would encourage you to show up. It's a great time, and you're supporting the volunteer fire department. We, within the next three and a half to four years, we're going to have to replace our self-contained breathing apparatus, and if we were to do that today, it would be about $150,000, which is, as you know, is in excess of what our yearly budget is for us for one year. So, we're going to save up, and so that within the next three years, when our current air packs go out of complacency, that we'll have a good chunk of that money taken care of to get those replaced. Let's see, we head to Fire Prevention Week, was the first week of October, and our firefighters were out in the schools, and we shared the fire prevention message this year, so that's always a great time, and in my opinion, one of the, one of the important things that we do, getting the fire safety message out to the children. Last Monday, we attended live fire training at Corrigan Township's fire training facility, which is really just an outstanding resource that we have. It's, we're very fortunate to have those kind of resources in our area to go do realistic training. We try to get over there at least twice a year, so this was our second visit there this year, and we had the whole fire department over there, and everybody loves it because we get back kind of late, but it's a lot of work, but it's really well worth it, so just want to let everyone know that it's quite a commitment, and thank our firefighters for doing that. This Saturday is not only Halloween, but it's time to change our clocks back an hour, and just as I do every year, I would encourage everyone to please replace your smoke alarm battery, and please don't be one of those people that hear the message, but then don't go back and actually do it. We have a very timely incident last week. I know everybody heard about the incident in Masonville, Kentucky, where there were four fire deaths in an occupancy where there were no working smoke alarms. So, in 2015, we still have very inexpensive technology available that's not utilized, and unfortunately, maybe that could have saved a life, so just encourage everybody to change your smoke alarm batteries, and I believe that's the end of my message for this evening.
Thank you.
Hey, just want to let you know, at the Harvest Fest, I met a couple of your, the new fire dot com kids, they're like kids now.
They're young.
Yeah, and one of the questions, just in talking with them, I'd say, so how do you like your chief? And they said, we love him. He's great. Just want to pass it on to you. Because I want you to come over to my house and check something. No, they really, they really think a lot of you, so really neat.
We got a great bunch. Do good work.
Chief, no question for you, but just a comment to citizens. I tell the chief on a regular basis, the Green Hills Fire Department is the best value in government in the entire county, maybe in the entire country. I may be understating it. And if we needed, if we were going to have a full-time paid department, it would be well in excess of a million dollars. And so, if you are in a financial situation where you cannot support them, I understand that, but I would just strongly encourage everybody to find a way to support the turkey raffle by buying some tickets when they come. They work hard, they are volunteers, they don't make a dime doing it, they do it because they love this community and they have a heart for service, so find a way to write that check for 20 bucks and get those tickets.
Amen.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, moving on, my report on the audited court receipts. I don't think the month of August got covered since I was off, off on vacation. So, for the county, they get $40.50. The state got $1,234.50. The Village of Green Hills got, wait a minute, 69, 69.41, and the grand total was $8,296 for the month of September. The county got $40.50. The state, $1,181.50. The Village of Green Hills, $5,250 for a grand total of $6,431. That's all I have. Good to be back. This was, this weather's almost like my vacation down in South Carolina with all the rain. Except it was about 30 degrees warmer down there than what it is here today.
We were down there right at the same time. Down in Hiltonan, it was something else.
Hoffmann's were down there, getting flooded out.
Is that Green Hill South?
Yes, right. And the rain gauge just failed on the island because it didn't go over 10 inches on their rain gauge, and so they were estimating between 12 and 18. And so, they were estimating between 12 and 18 inches of rain on Friday and Saturday-
Right.
...a week or so ago.
Yeah, it was nice.
So, maybe we say we were not driving our golf cart down there at that time. Okay, committee reports, community development. Mr. Holder.
Yes, I am going to attempt to thank all the people that volunteered, helped, and participated in the Harvest Festival. If I happen to miss someone, it isn't on purpose, but everyone from Chris Kohler, Ryan Harrison, Olivia, his sister, William. William has been a great help. I've just got a special shout-out for William. I don't know this individual very well, but every Harvest Fest, he's there, helping like crazy, and then he vanishes. So, we don't know if he's real or not, but we're really glad that he's a helper and a good worker. Vicky Harpen, Karen Betts, Sean Patterson, Green Hills Maintenance Staff, and Mike Castor, and even people that couldn't make it, often participated by loaning tents. Beth Gentry gave us the tent for the band. As you know, that was a very good thing to have on that day. Diane Kohler did definitely heavy lifting in the first half before she had to go away for work. She got activities going, the bouncy houses. First Baptist Church of Mount Healthy, want to thank them for their volunteering, the use of their bouncy houses, and Pastor Fran. Also, Diana had initial vendor sign-up. Patricia Bender started the skateboard tournament, initiated that and put that in the works. Also got demonstrator, demonstration, not demonstrators, demonstrations, use of her RV is another thing. I mean, the list goes on and on. Yvonne was a great help. I've called on you guys to help and volunteer and, you know, something like that. I think it's hard to quantify how many hours and how much sweat equity goes into something like that, rain or shine. And also want to thank the community. We actually had a fairly good turnout, all things considered, you know, weather and just how that played out. But thank you for everybody that participated and especially those that volunteered and helped. And just an update on the walking paths, maybe that should have gone to you, Greg, underneath recreation. Artwork has been done and approved. It's, I've gotten a quote on that. They are ready to print. They had to order special material that goes down on the sidewalks. And then, we also are going to have them apply it as well, since that's their expertise. The trick will be dried sidewalks are mandatory, so when you see those, let us know. But the plan is to get the walking paths, all three of them, up as soon as it's feasible to put down the decals.
What is their timing on getting the material?
My guess, I could check with him, but that was about a week ago. It usually doesn't take him long to get the material in. It is kind of pricey material because it's not something they do every day. My guess is it's in or it won't be long before it's in. The next question would be just-
The drive time.
Right. And also, I told him that some of us want to be out there, just placement on the sidewalks and what we're expecting, rather than just say, "Hey, go put them out there, give it your best shot." We have a map that Doug put together, and we want to make sure they're applied properly. The nice thing about these labels, I've got some, because of the space, I have extras printed up, so if there's a problem with one, we can, you know, replace it pretty readily, and then people can start walking. That concludes my report.
Questions? All right, traffic and safety, Ms. Brokaw.
We did not meet this week, this week, this month. We'll meet again next month. I believe November 16th is the date I have, but I wanted to check. I want to see if we can meet in conjunction with, make sure we get everything from the Neighborhood Watch or somehow tie along with that. So, I'm going to circle back with everybody just to make sure that that works, or we should move to accommodate the Neighborhood Watch. So, we'll get offline.
Comments, questions? Finance and audit, Mr. Dries.
Finance and audit will be meeting Thursday morning, October 29th at 8:00. And the finance committee strongly urges you to vote yes on issue number five on November 3rd, which is the renewal of the rec levy. It's an important piece to our budget. And for those of you that have said, "I wish that someone from Green Hills was on the board of elections," there are three candidates from Green Hills, so go make that happen. That's the end of my report. Oh, I'm sorry, I got one other thing. Nine and a half percent was built into the budget for the health care expense.
Good job, Glenn. Questions, comments? Recreation cable television, Mr. Hermes.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Basically, I want to go over, there was a nice article that was put in by Yvonne in the local papers, and it was talking about the proposed tax levy issue. And it's a renewal. Six years ago, I'm working with Dave, Mr. Moore, our mayor now, he was our village manager, and we wanted to get, see if we can actually develop and get some more money so we can actually do some things to the village, help out with some parks. Because back in the day when things started in '37, '38, they had some parks. And being here for 37 years now, there was no parks for a lot of years. So, in order to do something like that, we had to come up with some way to get, generate some kind of funding. So, we were able to raise it. Right now, for the renewal itself, for a $100,000 house, it's about $21 a year. Now, what that has done in the past five years, now it being a renewal, like she had in the paper, the first Palmer Park, that was the first one we actually worked on, that was actually before the levy, I think, but we actually updated since that time. Also, the park that we have over here off of Jack Malloy Lane, which was done about a year and a half ago, that was a real big one. It's, you know, took a lot of planning and everything else, and, you know, with the help of Jeff and Yvonne and having a lot of people to get together and get, put that together was awesome. We helped out a little bit with the golf course and doing things there. But all the different things, the one call now that we have been going on to let people know what's going on, all the different activities that are happening. And we can definitely use more phone numbers. Everybody doesn't think if they don't get called, you know, geez, all we need is your phone number, you're in Lake Flint, even cell phones. A lot of the different things about Burley Park right now is being worked on, developed that, cleaning it up, putting some new sidewalks in, and, you know, that type of thing, everything that happens with, gosh, recreation levies, it just helps out with everything that goes on. Trying to think of all the other things that are going on with that. Ah, table, picnic tables and bike racks and pool chairs and just all the things that people don't think about, where does the money come from? And the way things have been the past several years, it's really hard to maintain something that's in a nice village. So, just by having this renewal is really going to help out. And it's not going to be any more off your taxes, and that's the biggest thing. So, really hope everything, everybody votes for that levy. I think it's on the 3rd or 2nd?
3rd.
The 3rd of November, so. But it really means a lot, and we can take care of a lot of things in this village that really help us out. And that's really all I have to say.
Comments, questions? All right, moving on, we'll combine the Intergovernmental Affairs, Laws and Rules, since Mr. Lee's not here, and Service and Streets, Councilmember Walther.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Ms. Brokaw mentioned before, regarding the waste collection bids, due November the 4th, we're going to have perhaps a separate time to discuss that and then to be able to have it on November the 24th. Regarding the walking path, we already just mentioned that. And for the walking paths, there are 35 benches along the path. The second path, the Commons Path, is the one-quarter mile around the Commons. There's 35 benches there. The second path is the Green Hills Mile, is one mile, and there are 18 benches there. The third path is the Pioneer Path, and it's three miles, and there are 21 benches along this path. While numerous new benches were considered, benches were added along these routes at the following locations, near 32 Cromwell, in front of Wynton Woods Primary North, at the north, at the corner of Flanders and Fairgood. Also, these numbers are adequate at this time, and if something, the need arises, we will evaluate later on. Regarding the tree planting, we're going to have it a week after Thanksgiving. Regarding the service building pain issue, perhaps Mr. Forbes can add something to that. There have been a meeting, they have talked to the vendor, they're negotiating a settlement at this time, so at some point in time, we'll have the building repainted. And we should have a resolution sometime by next month. Does that sound-
Yeah, actually, I've been the one talking with them, and I hope next month to have the resolution.
Okay, thank you. And leaf collection is in a full swing right now. And always, as always, the residents are asked not to place the leaves in the curbs and do not mix it with the other items, just only the leaves. I also have met, had a lovely lunch with Mr. Maloney from your law firm, one of the partners, and also, and help me pronounce this, Ying Zhang.
Jing.
Jing Zhang, okay. Attorney of Law there, we had a lovely luncheon there, and I found out that they are pretty much in charge of bringing businesses into this country and procuring visas, working visas and things like that. So, maybe they will have a need for location. I mentioned that when I was at the luncheon there, and we have certainly placed space here for that.
Right, maybe we can find a spot.
We can, we could, yes, I think we could. Also, I attended the meeting for a student achievement committee, and that was on the 19th of October at Wynton Woods. And I also had a private meeting with the superintendent and Dr. Holder, which is the person in charge of curriculum. And I was making some suggestions on some of the programs that they have and things that may have to maybe have a little tweak here and there. And they were very welcoming to any suggestions, and meeting lasted an hour and a half or so. So, I was very encouraged with that. And I will be having a second reading, a voting of two ordinances later on. And if Ms. Brokaw, if it's okay with you, I would like to, the meeting that I have for State and Services, we did not have it this month, there were so many conflicts in here. And the next one is the 30th of November. That's the one, because it's the last Monday of the month. If you so wish, if we have to discuss something earlier on than that, I also have open the 16th of November. Since we did not have this one on the month of October, and we need to move up to the one in November at your convenience, please let me know.
Okay, thank you.
And that concludes my report.
Questions, comments? Maybe they could find a business in China that would like to move here and locate at the shopping center and buy the whole thing. Would be nice. Okay, unfinished business. We have ordinance number 201507LNR, an ordinance amending portions of the Green Hills Code of Ordinances, Part 11, Planning and Zoning. It's on the agenda for a second reading. Councilmember Walther.
This is the second reading of ordinance number 201507LNR, ordinance amending portions of Green Hills Code of Ordinances, Part 11, Planning and Zoning Code, whereas the Village Council forward-proposed zoning code amendments to the Green Hills Planning Commission for consideration and recommendation, and whereas the Green Hills Planning Commission, after due consideration and a public hearing, Planning Commission has recommended the approval of the attached amendments. Now, the attached amendments, we have discussed that, and we're in open meeting, and one of them is 1111.01, having to do with the dog, the dogs, the running cages and so forth, the signs as abandoned, 121.01, and operations within enclosed structures, Section 1115.09. We discussed this extensively, and we made sure that it was, was not going to be any problems with the existing businesses there. We had also outdoor storage in the residential areas, the junk storage, signed regulations.
Isn't that part of the discussion and not part of reading?
Is that going to have to be added into the wording of the ordinance now?
Well, I thought it was the whole ordinance for the reading of it.
No, it's just this.
No?
It's a covered page.
Okay. All right, so now therefore, be it ordained by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, the State of Ohio, Section 1, the proposed amendments to the Green Hills Planning and Zoning Code, attached as Exhibit A to this ordinance, are hereby approved by Village Council. In Section 2, this ordinance shall be in effect from and after the earliest period allowed by law.
Okay, moved and seconded.
I second it. Jeff, got it.
I second it. Okay, been moved and seconded for ordinance 201507LNR. Any discussion?
Do you want to recap?
I can't.
I think Maria did a good job.
Yeah, that's true. I was just opening the opportunity.
Okay, have a roll call.
Roll call. I move to adopt the resumé de ordinance.
Oh, it didn't, oh, wait a minute.
And Jeff seconded.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
Roll call.
Aye.
Dries.
Aye.
Holter.
Aye.
Hermes.
Aye.
Walther.
Aye.
Okay, ordinance 2015, dash 07, dash LNR, amending portions of the Green Hills Code of Ordinances passes. All right. We have another one, ordinance 2015, dash 08, dash F, an ordinance to amend Chapter 191 of the Codified Ordinances of the Village of Green Hills regarding municipal income tax. Mr. Dries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the second reading of ordinance 201508F, an ordinance to amend Chapter 191 of the Codified Ordinances of the Village of Green Hills regarding municipal income tax, whereas the Home Rule Amendment of the Ohio Constitution, Article 17, Section 3, provides that-
I didn't think there was any foreign languages here.
"Municipality shall have authority to exercise all powers of local self-government, and the municipal taxing power is one of such powers of local self-government delegated by the people of the state to the people of municipalities. And whereas Article 13, Section 6 of the Ohio Constitution provides, the General Assembly may restrict a municipality's power of taxation to the extent necessary to prevent abuse of such power. And where Article 28, or I'm sorry, 18 of Section 13 of the Ohio Constitution states that laws must be passed to limit the powers of municipalities to levy taxes and incur debts for local purposes. And whereas the General Assembly has determined that it is necessary and appropriate to comprehensively review and amend Chapter 718 of the Ohio Revised Code, setting for statutory requirements for municipal income tax codes in Ohio. And whereas more specifically, the General Assembly enacted House Bill 5 in December 2014 and mandated that municipal income tax codes be amended by January 1st, 2016, such that any income or withholding tax is levied in accordance with the provisions and limitations specified in Chapter 718. And whereas, upon a detailed review of House Bill 5 and the Codified Ordinances of the Village of Green Hills, this ordinance is found and determined by this council to enact the amendments required prior to the January 1st, 2016 deadline, to be in accord with the provisions and limitations specified in Chapter 718 of the Revised Code. Whereas council also finds and determines that the constitutionality of certain provisions of the state-mandated code may have been put in question by recent decisions of the Ohio Supreme Court regarding, among other things, taxation of professional athletes. But these provisions must be included if the municipal income tax code is to be levied in accordance with the provisions and limitations specified in Chapter 718, and thus reluctantly are adopted by this council, but are disclaimed to the extent that they are unlawful or unconstitutional. Now therefore, be it ordained by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, members elected thereto, concurring, Section 1, that the, that Chapter 191 of the Codified Ordinances be amended to- be amended to read as set forth in the document attached hereto as Exhibit A, and incorporated herein by reference, Section 2, that this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after January 1st, 2016. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this ordinance.
Second.
Okay, been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance 2015-dash-08-dash-F. Any discussion?
Just a comment, this is what we are required to do because of the passage of House Bill 5, so that we are in compliance with the municipal tax laws.
Where'd Waynesville come from?
Ah, it was a pipe.
It's a place in Ohio.
Okay, any other comments? All right, clerk, call the roll.
Dries?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Roll call?
Aye.
Okay, ordinance 2015-dash-08-dash-F. An ordinance to amend Chapter 191 of the codified ordinances of the Village of Green Hills regarding municipal income tax, passes. And the next one, ordinance 2015-dash-09-LNR, ordinance amending Section 3.29G of the Green Hills Employee Handbook. Councilmember Walther?
And this is the second reading.
Right, second reading.
Whereas the Village Council desires to amend the Green Hills Employee Manual, originally adopted by Council Ordinance Number 2012-09-LNR, and recently updated. Now therefore, be it ordained by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, Section 1, that amendment outlined in Exhibit A, attached here too, and by reference made apart hereof, is hereby adopted by council, and Section 2, that this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law, and the attachment, it's the amended Section 3.29 that reads as follows, on January 1st of each calendar year.
No, you don't need to...
You don't need to read that, okay? So, I just move for the adoption?
Yes.
I move to adopt the ordinance?
Second.
Okay, been moved and seconded, adopt ordinance number 2015-dash-09-LNR. Any comments or questions?
I just want to make sure that payroll has the correct notations next to, since it looks like people, current employees, they are paid at straight time, but eventually, if there's additional, there'll be some people paid at time and a half, so I guess just make sure there's a cheat sheet, since that could make a little bit of a sticky situation.
Cheat sheet, huh? That's good. Okay, roll call.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Roll call?
Aye.
Dries?
Aye.
Yeah, ordinance 2015-dash-09-dash-LNR, ordinance amending Section 3.29G of the Green Hills Employee Handbook, passes. Okay, new business.
I would like a motion to convene an executive session to discuss the performance evaluations of public officials, and to discuss the sale and purchase of real estate, I so move.
Second.
And we may have...
Action.
Action afterwards.
Okay, roll call.
Hermes?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Roll call?
Aye.
Dries?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
I would like to...
We need a roll call.
To come out?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Not to come out.
To go back into public session?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Roll call?
Aye.
Dries?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
I would move to amend the agenda to...
Add resolution.
To add Resolution Number 2015-37-CD, authorizing the municipal manager to enter into a contract for the sale and purchase of real estate located at 5961 Drummond Street. I'm just amending the agenda, you have to read the whole thing.
I'll second the motion to amend the agenda.
Now, does that need a roll call? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I have Resolution Number 2015-37-CD, authorizing the municipal manager to enter into a contract for the sale and purchase of real estate located at 5961 Drummond Street, whereas the Village of Green Hills has received and offered a purchase from the Village, 5961 Drummond Street, and whereas Council of the Village of Green Hills desires to authorize said sale, now...
Second.
Therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, Section 1, that the municipal manager is hereby authorized to enter into a contract for the purchase and sale of property located at 5961 Drummond Street with garages, to Brian Watson, that has the following terms and conditions, purchase price $65,000, earnest money $1,000, financing conventional loan, no seller-paid closing costs, no seller-paid title insurance, no inspections as is, close by 11:30 15. Section 2, that the municipal manager is further authorized to execute any and all necessary documents to fulfill the sale of said property. Section 3, that the finance director is hereby directed to deposit the sale proceeds into the voted general obligation bond retirement fund. Section 4, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law, I so move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to pass Resolution Number 2015-dash-37-dash-CD. Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, roll call, vote.
Walther?
Aye.
Roll call?
Aye.
Dries?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Okay, Resolution 2015-37-dash-CD, authorizing municipal manager enter into a contract for the sale and purchase of real estate located at 5961 Drummond Street, passes.
Were you calendar?
Yes, calendar. Let's do the calendar before we...
Community development meeting on November 4th at 10:00 a.m.
Turkey Raffle, November 21st.
It's Saturday, Halloween, trick-or-treating.
Finance and audit, 8:00, October 29th, November 3rd, Election Day, all day. Light up Green Hills, December 4th.
Mm-hmm.
Community police event at the Troubadour, November 12th, 6:00.
Spices and Services is on the, on the calendar for the 30th of November, unless the manager believes that we need to move before that, the date, and that could be then of your option, Ms. Kovak.
Okay, was the Neighborhood Watch at 7, but the Troubadour is opening at 6.
Yes, yes.
Thank you for that correction.
So, you can get coffee, too.
Keep you awake.
Get ready for the meeting.
Or din-din. They said din-din, too.
Yeah, they said din-din.
Oh, hmm, okay.
Is that AM?
No.
PM.
PM. I'd love AM, but you know.
No.
Yeah, it's past your bedtime, almost.
I will not be there 6:00 AM.
Yeah, it's 7:00, yeah.
All right, is that it?
Do we need to move to, change the agenda again, to go into an executive session to discuss the performance evaluations of the public officials, and not have anything afterwards? We just didn't want to keep everyone's time, since we knew we had a motion.
Move to reconvene the executive session.
Yes, right.
You don't need to amend the agenda.
Okay, then I move to reconvene, reconvene the executive session.
For the...
To discuss per...
Performance evaluation.
To discuss the performance evaluations of public officials, period.
I second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Roll call. Roll call. Roll call?
Aye.
Dries?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.